Thank you.
Okay. All right, um, let's see. Two twenty-five, Fire Department, Mr. Sagorino.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. I think that Chief wanted to see.
Yes, he is.
A couple of appointments in the Fire Department.
Good evening.
Evening.
Evening, Chief.
We have two appointments for you tonight, recommendations. They've both been through a series of interviews and background checks, medical testing, and the firefighter physical agility test. First one I'm going to recommend tonight is Mr. Ryan Loftus. He became a fire, uh, paramedic earlier this year after working as an EMT basic at Armstrong Ambulance for several years. He's also served as a field training officer for Armstrong, served in several public safety positions throughout the years. Uh, he's been a lifeguard, ski patroller, and volunteer with the Waltham Auxiliary Fire Department. He comes highly recommended from his supervisors at Armstrong. He's also recommended by former ambulance partners that are currently employed with us at the Burlington Fire Department. He has all the certifications that he needs to get started, except for firefighter. We have to send him to the academy. He's a resident Newton, graduate of the College of the Holy Cross, and I'm pleased to recommend Mr. Ryan Loftus for the position of firefighter/paramedic at the Burlington Fire Department effective December ninth.
Thank you, Chief. With the Chief's recommendation, I wish to appoint Ryan Loftus to the position of firefighter/paramedic in the Burlington Fire Department and ask the board to waive his fifteen day waiting period.
So moved.
Second. So moved to second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Congratulations. Can't break the decision now.
Congratulations.
At least welcome aboard, congratulations.
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 All right. Want to get some pictures with your parents and your chief?
Do you guys want to get in?
Oh, sure, that'd be great, thank you.
So next up is Mr. Ryan, uh, Mr. Sean Daly. He most, he recently became a paramedic. Uh, he's been, was working as a EMT and is now working as a paramedic. When he did his training, he did his training with us, um, his ride-along time, and I, I saw him day in and day out. Everyone that rode with him spoke very highly of, of him, uh, so he's a, he's a great hire. He's a local kid, uh, born and raised in Burlington, went to Shawsheen Tech. Um, he's excited to come work here, and we're pleased to have a, a homegrown firefighter/paramedic. I'm pleased to recommend Mr. Sean Daly to the position of firefighter medic at the Burlington Fire Department effective December ninth.
Uh, thank you, Chief. Now, with the Chief's recommendation, I wish to appoint Sean Daly to the position of firefighter/paramedic in the Burlington Fire Department and ask the board to waive his fifteen day waiting period.
So moved.
Second. So moved to second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Thank you.
For having me.
Congrats.
Welcome aboard, told you so, yeah.
Congrats.
Thank you for having me.
Congratulations.
Oh, pictures. I was going to be. Hey. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, next we got two twenty-six approval, Kings Bowling.
How's it going, everybody?
Good, how you doing?
Good.
Just introduce yourself and sign the paper and.
Uh, my name's Nelson Duran, beverage, National Beverage Director for Kings Dining and Entertainment. Um, uh, purpose of this is that I'm looking to receive approval for offering our King-size, so it's our large format drinks for four more people. Um, we currently offer these at our ten other locations across five other states. Uh, the town of Burlington is always the one that we never received approval for, um, but in that timeframe, since we've been open, two other locations in the town have received uh, special approval to offer, uh, shareable drinks, so.
Okay, great. Start with, uh, Mike, your alcohol subcommittee.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, the subcommittee, Alcohol Subcommittee, Joe and I met with, um, gentleman from Kings and, uh, went over everything, everything looked, uh, on the up and up. Seems like just the big difference here is the vessel of the drink.
Mm-hmm.
As opposed to the amount of alcohol being served. And they also did say that they were going to keep a close eye on it and not really change the amount of alcohol someone can get in a sitting, but just the way it's delivered, so everything looked, uh, on the up and up to us. I'm not, I don't know if I want to speak for you, but, um, the Alcohol Subcommittee was in favor of this.
Great.
Thank you.
Sarah?
Um, yeah, I have a question about.
Yep.
I don't know if it's different because there's several other, several drinks here, but is there an ounce?
So every drink, no matter what it is, you, the guests will never have more than, if it's four people, which is the minimum required for it, you'll never have more than two drinks in front of you at any given time, and you're only allowed one of those vessels within your party every hour. If you were there for more than two hours, you could get a second one, but that's not typically what ends up happening with these cocktails, so essentially you just get two drinks within an hour, which adheres to all TIP certification and Town of Burlington certification.
Okay. I have a question about that because in the past when we approved this for Karma and Tavern, it was the limit of one of those giant beverages per night.
Okay.
So I don't know if we want to make it, um, you know, consistent across the board. I don't know if the Alcohol Subcommittee talked about that, but that, I did go back and look at the minutes from, it was November twenty twenty-one, when this was discussed at the Select Board for Karma and Tavern, and it was minimum four person per, um, per table, everyone at that table had to be twenty-one plus, and there was a limit of one drink. I mean, if we want to change that, I'm open to that, but that was the precedent set at that point.
Okay, let's go through the questions first, then we'll get back to that. So if there's any other questions, we can add it on, and then we'll get back to that at the, at the end of that.
Okay. Okay, sorry, Joe, can I, one more?
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah, 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 I'm sorry. I thought that was it.
Um, so I know you, this is a, a common practice at your other establishments. Has there ever been any issues or?
Uh, no, and it also is very much, we don't sell a lot of these, it's just, we want to be able to offer this in a, a party setting, uh, for like guests coming in to celebrate. It's more of an Instagram sort of.
Novelty.
Novelty drink than what we typically sell. Across the company, we sell maybe ten, so that's on average, one per location a week, so it's not something that we run into a, a lot of frequently.
Okay, and then, uh, just out of curiosity, how is it served? Because I've seen them where it's like multiple straws per drink or like a spout?
Yeah, so the current ideation that we have everywhere, it's a, a big two-liter fishbowl. Um, the ounces of the liquid stay the same. Um, we do have the option that you can share it as a straw, kind of like a scorpion bowl à la Karma, but we do offer a ladle as well, uh, that you can pour it into your own, uh, cup if you so choose to.
Okay, I'm a germaphobe, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Beats that.
We did offer both, when we take the order, we offer both options that way. We know some people don't want to share, even if it's a separate straw, they don't want to share, so they get a ladle to be able to do that, so.
Okay, thank you, I don't have any other questions.
Okay, go ahead. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How is that one hour monitored?
Uh, so the one hour is monitored on our POS system, the second it gets rung in, the next one, we have the ticket times on there, the next one cannot be rung in, but i- if we limit it to one per the group, then that's null and void, we don't need to, and it's something that we're totally okay with doing. Like I said, we rarely sell one, so the, the likelihood of a second one, we can put those parameters in place.
Only takes one to take the Instagram picture, right?
Yeah.
I wanted to make sure it wasn't just relying on someone.
No, no, our POSI system has, uh, one, the time, timestamps on it attached to it.
That's the only question I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Nick?
Thanks, Chairman. Um, my only question that pertains right now before we get into the larger discussion around, uh, unity amongst the decision-making is, uh, other drinks. Right, this might be where once per hour, um, you know, could I then order something else?
Um, so within that hour that your group has purchased this first one, you're not allowed to order another drink on top of that, so you can't get another shot or another beer, um, amongst your group. You've decided to consume this drink.
Yep.
Um, and with the fluid ounces of all the mixers and everything involved, that's typically the length of time that it takes for you to go through it. We don't see people just pounding all, all of these. After that one hour mark, um, we reevaluate because we have a system in place at Kings that after your third drink, you need to have communication with the manager to be able to serve a fourth drink to any guests in our establishment, um, so we carefully monitor and then, um, proceed with caution moving forward on that front.
Okay. All right.
That's my only question. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. So I think everything's, everything's under control except for the, uh, question that Sarah had. I do like all the ideas that you just put out to us, the, you know, the one drink for the table, um, whether or not somebody wants to get, say, three of them want the drink and one doesn't, they can't get it unless all four of them do, um, those are all the parameters we talked about earlier and stuff like that, so, uh, we're going to go right to Sarah's question, and, uh, we'll try to figure that out right now, very quickly. So your question was, we approved comma and to have the other alcohol, we want to keep it the same way for this particular one, and then reevaluate it after we approve this, or would you like to do it a different way?
To me, it sounds like it wouldn't be a huge issue for them to set that parameter since these, it's not like people are ordering a ton.
They're not.
Back, back to back, you know? So I think, given the precedent that we've set already, I would feel comfortable, you know, requiring that as part of the recommendations.
Okay.
One per table per night.
Okay, yep, okay. Uh, Paul, anything that?
Uh, Chairman, I would agree, um, I think consistency, say, it's easier for us to keep track, that we know that all, uh, large, uh, live-serving containers at the free facilities that are allowed, they, they're operated in the same rule of one, um, per foursome, um, every evening.
Okay, great.
That makes sense, just to staff, for us to keep track of things, you know, those that have different, different rules for these large, uh, live serving.
I couldn't agree with you more. I think.
Chairman?
What's good for one is good for the other, yes, sir.
Uh, as a follow-up, would it, can it be, when a, a, an establishment applies one of these, can this be noted to them ahead of time that we have one, a limit of one, so they'll know ahead of time that, but they can't ask, come to here and say, oh, can we do two? They know before they even come here, it's going to be one, one and done. We can do that? I think that would be smooth out a, a wrinkle.
Okay.
Maybe it might be advantageous for us to draft a quick, like, large serving policy, you know, and just have it.
Yeah, at this point, I think that makes sense where we've had three establishments, uh, request this type of thing, and then, uh, if you want to take each one individually going forward, or if you just want to say, you know, in the town, we're okay with this, and you need the establishments.
Or can we just amend the current alcohol policy?
Yeah, add something.
Just add something?
Yeah, within the current policy, it says nothing in a picture, basically, and that's why they have to come to us with this sort of waiver, I guess. Uh, so, yeah, might be worth revisiting.
Okay, so I think we're all in agreement with this, so, um, Sarah, why don't you make that part of your.
Uh.
Motion. Motion, approval, whatever you think.
Can you just say motion to approve the condition that, um, more than one per area every evening or?
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, that Kings can serve these King-size drinks, um, with the parameters of, uh, table has to be at least four, um, people, all over twenty-one, and no more than one, uh, of these King-size beverages per night.
Second. Sorry, it's written, uh, motion made, second.
One, just a clarification, should it say twenty-one and over as opposed to over twenty-one?
Oh, did I say twen-?
Yeah.
Over twenty-one?
Twenty-one and over, yeah.
Okay, yes. Should I say the whole thing over? The amendment that it's twenty-one plus.
There you go. Do you want to second on that one?
Second on that one.
There you go. So motion made in second and for approval, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. All the best. You've been a great neighbor for us, so I'm really not too concerned about this.
Hope to see everybody on Thursday, the event.
We'll be, we'll be ordering one.
We're up to four hundred. We won't have it in place by then. We've got to get new menus and train the staff.
Just give me, give me a water or Coke.
We have plenty of that.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much, everybody.
Have a good night. Okay, we've got five twenty-seven, public hearing, uh, Birdie Bar. Yeah, that's you guys, unless there's another group in the room I haven't seen yet.
Hiding behind the building, stations.
How's everyone doing tonight?
Good. So at this point, I want to, oh, there's a public hearing, so I'm opening the public hearing at this point. Uh, can either approve, uh, written, as written in the notice, date type, uh, location and purpose, okay? Is that what I needed?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the notice as written.
Okay, thank you. Motion made.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, five zero zero, okay. Just introduce yourselves and.
Sure.
Go forward, I've already met a couple of yous.
Appreciate it, uh, my name is Joe Shea.
I'm Rob Shea.
We're brothers, that's our dad, Tom, back there, um, we are the.
Family feud.
Family feud, yes. Um, we are the owners of Birdie Bar, uh, which is a golf simulator bar in Waltham, and, um, we are looking to open up, uh, another location in Burlington, uh, and we're here to apply for an all liquor license with you guys. Uh, we're looking to, uh, literally right down the street, the shops at Simmons Park, um, put in seven simulators, a full bar and a kitchen, um, to, you know, host leagues and the general public and events and, uh, just continue to grow our, our golf simulator business.
Okay, thank you, so, I'll go with this one first. So we did have a meeting, uh, we were there, we were here, uh, me and Mike asked a million questions, we thought it was going to be very, very good, uh, for the town of Burlington, uh, it's kind of like the other one that's down the other end of town, pretty similar, they're going to have food, they understand all the rules and regulations, uh, me personally, I see no reason not to allow this, I think it's a great event, or a great, um, uh, participation to the town, uh, they'll be there every day working, a little bit slower in the summertime, I'm assuming, unless it rains out.
Yep.
The guys will be there.
Pray for rain.
So, women will be engulfing, somebody will be there, so that was my outtake on it. Mike, you were at the meeting also, so go ahead.
Yeah, you pretty much summed it all up, and, um, I'm in favor of also the liquor license for this establishment.
Okay, we'll start with, uh, Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first, save yourself grief, it's Simon's Pod.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm from Arlington, I'm not from Burlington, I apologize, Simons.
You're in Burlington, you got to speak Burlington.
Understood, understood.
Yeah.
Um, I, I love the idea that you bring in entertainment to this side of the town, the residential side, a lot of the fun stuff is over by the mall, uh, Turnpike, um, a couple of res- residents have heard about this and more than one occasion said, oh, that's going to be a great fit in that location, and I couldn't agree with them more. Love the idea of the entertainment on closer to the residents, and what we lack townwide is this type of entertainment combined with the, you know, the, the atmosphere, but, uh, I personally think it's a fantastic idea, I can walk there from my house.
Awesome.
My, see me there. I mean, I'm still going to be awful at golf, but, that's why I golf with Joe, says he, he makes me look good.
That's right.
That's all I have.
I make you look good all the time, it's all, it's easy. Uh, Nick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I do, I, I, I agree with everything Jim said, I think, um, since that plaza opened, we've been looking for things to go into it, um, that are going to, you know, help this side of the, the town, right? I mean, you know, we have so much great stuff going on across, uh, you know, Millsix Turnpike and Mall Road, and yet, you know, most of our residents live over this way. Uh, not that it's a long drive across town, uh, but every once in a while, you don't want to go, you know, to where half the region's coming for dinner or for entertainment, so to be able to have, uh, you know, alternate forms of entertainment, uh, on this side of town, I think is, is, is going to be good. I don't have any questions for you guys, uh, everything seems in line, straightforward, I looked at schematic, I, I looked at the backup, um, so, you know, I wish the best of luck with some approval tonight, um, but yeah, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, yeah, welcome.
Thank you.
Hopefully, and, um, I love this idea as well. I did have some questions just because it was unclear based on the, what I saw in the application in terms of like the kitchen and what you're offering for food, is it similar to your Waltham location?
I have our, our Waltham menus, if you want to take a look.
I have it.
Perfect.
I just wanted to mention.
It's, it's going to be essentially the same thing, so, um, similar to the other, uh, ex-golf in town, we, we use ventless, basically air fryers, um, pizzas, wings, uh, appetizers, uh, it's, it's definitely a, a full menu, but, um, it's, it's pub food, bar food.
Okay, and then how do people order? Is, are there, there waitstaff or is this like a QR code type situation where, you know, people order on an app and?
So we've done both prior, um, we tend not to have a, a huge amount of staff in our locations, so automation and may, being able to keep people at their bays and golfing is important to us, so we've done iPad ordering and, and things of that nature before, um, but typically we have two or three people on at once working, so you can go up and order at the bar, or you can order from your bay, um, again, we want to keep people in, in the bays and golfing and, you know, they're paying for the time and they're paying hourly, so we don't want them back and forth at the bar all the time ordering food, um, does that answer your question, or?
Yes, that's helpful, yes. Um, and again, going back to the policy, not, not an issue with the applicant or anything, but with our policy, may need to revisit this just based on sort of the more experiential, you know, businesses that we're getting in town and defining that, uh, more clearly within our policy, because right now it says, um, you know, licenses will only be granted to establishments whose principal business activity is a full-service restaurant or a movie theater that serves food. I don't know that this would fall under that, this is not a full-service restaurant, it's not waitstaff.
You can watch a movie on the, on the simulators if you want.
Fall under that, sure, if you want to, but anyway, that's, that's not a knock on anything that y'all are doing, but something that we may need to, another bullet point in our policy that may need to be clarified for these, you know, experiential, um, businesses that we want in town and we want to, you know, we want to grant this liquor licenses, license and bring in these businesses, so I think it's just making it easier and more clear for, for them and for us, but, um, other than that, I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Well, I think that me and Mike will sit down and go over our policy and come up with something on what we think, and your input will be good on that, so, um, is already okay with we do that later on, but right now.
Yep.
The applicant's in front of us, I do have a couple of things that I'd like to, uh, go over real quick with you, um, as far as the, the, your whole application goes, I'm fine with that, you're, you're on TV right now, um, I want you to go over how the people can get in touch with you, any website, uh, how to book a, how to book a stall, um, all these kind of things, because this is an opportunity to let the town know what you're doing.
Absolutely.
Um, if you're going to have a grand opening, if you know when that's going to be, uh, you could let us know, and we can put it out there as far as this group goes, uh, we want every business that comes to this town to succeed, so anything you'd like to say to the town right now?
Yeah, absolutely.
There you go.
Birdiebar.com is our website, everything is, can be done online right there, you can, it's pretty self-explanatory, once you go on, you'll see a big button that says book here, and you can book your tee time, uh, we book by the hour, uh, not by the person, so you can really bring as many people as you want if you want to have fun, and, um, again, everything can be done in there from contacting us to booking an event with us or just booking an hour worth of golf, uh, birdiebar.com, so, yeah.
Okay, all right, would you consider having a birthday party up there for a bunch of kids?
Only if it's for you, but yes.
I have no more birthdays, I'm done.
We do.
I'm past the speed limit, okay? I'm done, I'm past the speed limit.
We do tons of birthday parties, um, in our Waltham location, it's a great spot for whether you're turning ten or twelve or you're turning thirty-five, it, it doesn't matter, it's, it's a good spot, um, we hope to, in our, in our plans in Burlington, have a, a big area out back that will be dedicated, um, to, to doing those events, not outside, of course, but.
Yep.
Behind our kitchen, um, where we have a couple of simulators, so, yeah, definitely something that we, we do a lot of, corporate events, birthday parties.
Good, excellent.
Yeah.
Great. Well, I think the town's got to embrace this with open arms, so at this point, I would take a motion, uh, yes, oh, I got to do a public hearing, I forgot, a public hearing, anybody in the public would like to speak about this, um, applicant right now? Sean, anybody online? Lynn, you got the same one? Nothing? Uh, is there anybody in the room that would like to speak about this? No, okay, uh.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made in second, I have to close the public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, five zero zero, in favor, close the public hearing. Okay, now we can take a vote. Need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a, a motion, we approve Birdie Bar, uh, new liquor license, Birdie Bar, all alcohol license, one fifty-four Cambridge Street.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Same as the best, five zero zero, congratulations, guys, good luck.
Thank you very much.
You have an opening date yet?
But it'll, it'll be towards the beginning of the year, next year. We're hoping, uh, in, in, hopefully mid-January is when we get the.
Okay, could you let us know?
We're going to do a big grand opening party in you.
Yep.
Everyone will know that, yeah.
Awesome, love it, of course.
Should I, should I, should I bring my tennis racket? Because I'm terrible at golf.
Sure, sure. My work.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you, good luck, guys, good luck. Okay, where are we? See, Barbara made, Barbara made it. Uh, so public hearing granted location, Justice Street has withdrawn.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, uh, we received, uh, a notice from, uh, any of an applicant asking that they would withdraw this, uh, request without prejudice, so I sort of did, you know, spend some time on redesigning, uh, what they bring to us and, and bring it back to us, so, at this point, I would request the board, uh, for us to close the public hearing and take no action on, on this request.
Okay. I made a motion to close the public hearing on this.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Same as the best, five zero zero, and now we'll make a motion to, continue with? Nothing, we're done, we're done with that one, okay.
It is under the wind.
So goodbye.
After.
Thank you and good night.
All the meetings wasted.
Yep. Uh, citizens' time. Anybody in the room? Okay, um, anybody online? No. Okay, approval, dedication bench, Paul Raymond, believe that's you, Barbara? Thank you. Okay.
Thank you for hearing my request, Mr. Chair.
One second, do you have anything for this before we start?
I don't...
Okay, I'm sorry, that was my fault. Sorry, Barbara.
I, I think this is a pretty simple request. I think all of you are very familiar with Paul Raymond, who has served this town in various positions for 50 years, most of that time on planning board, but he's also served on recreation, on town meeting and on various boards and commissions. So we are proposing to install a bench in front of the town hall annex where Paul did most of his work in honor of him. It will be a standard bench like all the other benches that the recreation department purchases through their regular vendor. It will have a plaque on it with the wording that is in front of you in honor of Paul I can't remember what I wrote. In honor of Paul Raymond for the many years...
For his service to the...
Thank you. For his many years of service to the town of Burlington. So that's really all there is.
Okay. We'll start with Nick.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm going to be a pain and I apologize. I think that this is fine, this is great. Paul deserves to be recognized for 50 years of dedication to the community, actively giving back in various ways. I think that this board should discuss how we want to acknowledge these types of things going forward. And the reason I say this is because when you look at the common, we've got a lot of benches. And I think that's a testament of the people who have helped in the community over the years. But I think we're at a point where we've got more benches than we've got rear ends. You know, and I say that a bit in jest, but perhaps we say, okay, from now on, if you want to do a bench, maybe it goes to a park and it's, moves away from the common. Or maybe it's a tree dedication or a plant or it's got a plaque. Maybe we ask folks to kind of shift the thing they're looking to dedicate so that we don't wind up with, you know, stadium seating in the, in the town center. Just a thought. So something for us to discuss at a later date, just wanted to use this as a, as a forum to open my mouth, but I'm in favor of this dedication bench to Mr. Raymond.
Thank you.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Barbara, for more than 50 years of service, he's probably got a building in his own. But no, I think it's fantastic that we're going to acknowledge all his efforts. Because looking where Burlington is today, it's not because, it's because we have people like Paul Raymond who spent 50 years, you know, fine-tuning it to the way, to what it is today. So I think this is awesome.
Thank you. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Barbara, for bringing this forward to us. And obviously, thank you to Mr. Raymond for all of his years of service. Definitely well-deserved recognition and he's someone that I personally look up to. I met him last year when I was campaigning and he was great, great to chat with him. And just well-deserved. And I think this is a good spot. I don't think there's, I know there's a lot on the common. There's no benches in that spot, so, and it's got some beautiful trees, so I don't have any questions. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, having served with Paul on the planning board, I know how dedicated he is and, and well-spoken he was and how much he cares and loves Burlington. So I am fully in favor of this. It's a great idea. We should put 50 years of service, add the number to the...
I would be happy to do that.
Yeah, because that, I mean, 50 is awesome, that's, that's pretty awesome, and I think this is a great idea and fully in favor of it. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm definitely in favor of this, but I do have a couple of comments I'd like to make.
Okay.
If we start to put them in front of the town hall and town annex, where is that going to put us later on? I would like to make a proposal at this point. Paul Raymond has 50 years in the town, which is incredible. That's a long, long time to put into town. There is another side to this, there's another walkway in front of town hall which has two sides, there's a back entrance to this, there's another entrance over near the fire station side. Town hall has the same thing. Are we going to start to put benches all over this area too? That's my question to the board. I don't have a problem with this, but I would like to see some type of criteria, anybody that does 50 years for a town, you're right, Jimmy, deserves a bill, maybe small, but we don't have a lot of money. We don't have a lot of money, but something. So I'm in favor of it, but I just think that we need to put up some type of criteria so that, you know, someone retires after 10 years, they want to put a bench at town hall, it's like, don't get me wrong, 10 years is a great, great run, but this is 50 years. He deserves this. But I also think we should do something to stop growing this out further and further.
Real quickly, Mr. Chairman, just a follow-up on what you're saying now, what Nick said previously, is this to be a great item for strategic planning or down the road to...
Yep.
Again, we don't have a policy on this.
Right, we don't.
But we should probably, like, like you said, more and more people dedicating their, their time to the town, so of course, we're, we're going to get more requests, so I think we should, you know, get a vision for that, that's all I'm asking.
Well, I think, I think you're right, and I think we need to sit down and discuss that as a group. And I do believe it's our, it's our policy to decide. I don't think anybody can argue that point, but I do think that, you know, I don't know who else is going to have 50 years in here except for Mr. Denizio. You know, but other than that, I, I don't know, but, I mean, yes, it's a long time. He deserves this bench, there's no question about it. There are a lot of great things in this town. So yes, he does deserve this, but looking to the future, I think we should really sit down and start to discuss this and some other stuff that has come up tonight also.
Yeah, I would agree. And especially now, I think strategic planning is probably the best time to do it, because when we think about, you know, the folks in, let's say, Paul's graduating class of people who have supported the community, there are folks in that age bracket that are all, I mean, have, have lengthy service to the community, you know? So I think now's probably the best time to be having this conversation.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm in favor of discussing it as strategic planning. I've got six years in, I'm open for the gazebo, but we can discuss it.
Really?
What do you get for 37 years?
Police stop, it doesn't count. Yeah, let's get that right off the table right now, don't try to add stuff to this. All right, so at this point, I take a motion on, on this.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the dedication bench in front of the town hall annex in honor of Paul Raymond.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for bringing this up because it gave us an opportunity to talk about this too.
Thank you. And if I could just make a quick comment, I want to thank the recreation department because they're working with us on securing the bench because he did work on the recreation commission for a long time. So I wanted to acknowledge that they're, they're doing heavy lifting on this too. And also just wanted to mention, I'm going to be seeing Paul tomorrow and I made note of your comments and I will pass them on to him. I know it will mean a lot to him.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, Barbara.
All right. Oh my God, rat the minutes. I should slow down a little bit, huh? I want to slow down a little bit.
Now? Now you want to say slow down?
All right. Need approval for the minutes of 9:23 and 9:30 of 2024, if everybody's okay with it.
And the water?
I think we do them separately, don't we? Don't we always do them separately?
If we weren't intended...
That was the TPW one we did?
The water?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is a procedural question, I don't know, like, if we weren't, we can, okay. Yeah, yeah.
At least I said you can.
Okay.
If you want to, you can take it.
Got it.
Okay, so I need a motion?
Do we want to take them as a group?
Take them as a group, go ahead.
All right, then, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve our regular minutes from 9:23, 2024, 9:30, 2024, as well as the water subcommittee minutes from 9:30, 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Minutes have passed. All right, seeing there's no subcommittee reports, let's go, no, we can't, subcommittee reports. Sarah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have much, but I will reiterate that as of November 1st, the Leahy Clinic will be offering free parking to Burlington seniors at the main campus of 41 Mall Road and 31 Mall Road. You just need to show proof of residency, proof of age and your appointment time to the desk for validation, so that's good news for our Burlington seniors. And then just a reminder that Halloween is coming up a week from Thursday and just reminding folks to please be careful, slow down and watch out for our little ones out there.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Vice Chairman?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Nick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually have, only have the one thing I want to just remind folks that Burlington, here in Burlington, we do early voting, which started this past Saturday. Was that your thing? That's the one thing?
Keep going, keep going, it's all right.
Go through it. But in any case, so today is Monday, the 21st. We have early voting all the way through Friday, November 1st. Hours are all right on our town website, broonton.org. You can click and go see our Burlington election, 1, 2, 3 quick guide, so I won't sit here and belabor all the hours that are available, but you come right up here to the main hearing room on second floor of town hall and you can vote in advance of the election or you can show up on election day and vote down at the high school. Polls will be open November 5th. Get out and vote. And I just want to echo the sentiments that Sarah said about Halloween, please be safe. A lot of little ones aren't around, you know, on a Thursday night, I think people can easily forget, you know, so just keep your eyes open for little kids dashing, dashing in the streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The September summary for the fire department, they respond, they had, they responded to 457 incidents of those 278 were EMS-related, medical aid calls. They did knock down a kitchen fire and they had three grill fires on decks attached to houses. And they didn't mention the name, and I wish they had because I would have thanked the builder publicly, but a local builder donated a house just before demolishing it so that the fire department was able to conduct week-long training activities. And those involved, they, they charged the house with smoke, laddered the home and used different types of tools during this whole week-long practice, practice venting buildings. So I know the police have done similar, but if you're a builder out there and you're getting ready to knock down a house, please let the fire, let me make the offer, if you can, to the police or fire departments to do a practice before you knock the house down. So, but I wish, like I said, I wish I knew who the builder was, we'd thank him, but it does mean a lot when you train in a real setting as opposed to a classroom. But that's all I have.
Thank you. I have my typical hunting, it's hunting season, so the landlocked forest does have hunters in it. That's as far as I'll go. The one other thing I would like to say, if you notice, we all have something pink on tonight. Sarah had a great idea at that last meeting, we should have pink on for breast cancer awareness, and we've all done it, so good luck to anybody out there that's fighting the battle, for those that have fought the battle, all the best. So, and at that moment, Mr. Sagarino, anything to report?
Mr. Chairman, I did alert the board, got the latest grants, the town received last week. Unfortunately, that information is still under embargo, so we can't talk about it probably until the end of the week, so I'll save that as my mission.
Okay, thank you. Lynn? Mr. Denizio. Okay, so I will take a motion to bang the gavel.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. Good night.